Good evening, I believe at the last council meeting, Councilmember Louis asked for a report on the seventeen million four hundred thousand dollar prepayments that five of our industries in our ETJ contracted to. And so I prepared this report that says that in two thousand eight, the city contracted by a resolution with five of the industries. I have them listed and they made these prepayments on, they were called prepayments in the resolution. They made them on January first, two thousand nine. And in their contract, each one had a different amount, but in their contract, we agreed to credit those payments against their industrial district tax at one-fifth each and pay them six percent interest on their prepayments. And I have scheduled out for you by the resolution number, listed the district, the prepayment amount that each one made, how much was credited annually back to their tax, against their tax. And then I scheduled out with the interest, how much is scheduled out credited back against their tax. And next year is the last year. I have the total prepayments there in front of you. I passed one out to everybody if you don't have one, let me know. And you subtract the total credits back against the prepayment and that gives the amount of interest that was credited back against the industrial district payments.
Okay, appreciate it. The reason I called for this report, because it's been said over and over in the public that it was an advance payment. It was not a loan. But you were looking at two point nine million dollars in interest. That's a loan. Now, this is not the only thing. I'm calling for the manager to also bring me an additional report in the future, an additional report, showing the impact by not getting this money in the budget and applying it to public works, solid waste in most places. We have been impacted a lot more than three million dollars because we've had to open land, public work, we've had to rent vehicles that we couldn't deliver the services for the public, we couldn't do none of those things. So I need to know what that impact was. That is three million on this side in interest, it'll probably going to turn out to be total six, seven million dollars impact because we had to rent equipment, do all kinds of things, or we had to offset not getting this money and put it into the equipment purchasing fund where we could purchase equipment. We had equipment breaking down, services where Groves had to come in and help us. And you know, that's what happens when you make bad decisions, borrowing money that you don't have no resources to pay back. That's why the city of Detroit is in a pickle now and today, borrowing money without resources to pay back. If we hadn't had some changes on this council, we continue down this road, we'll be just like Detroit, filing bankruptcy. So I'm the city manager, I need an additional report on the impact on public works and what that is for the next council meeting.
Mayor for Kent Williamson?
Gee, I hate to put you on the spot, but I must say, well, I don't want to be arguing with the council member about, is this a loan in any way, shape, or form? Is the word loan used anywhere in the agreement?
The word loan was not used in the agreement.
Do we have to pay back the principal? As we would have if we had made a loan. Pay back the principal and you pay back the interest. Did we pay back the principal?
We didn't make any payments back in exchange of funds, but yes, we did credit back the prepayments. So for example, if you look at the first one, the prepayment amount was three million six hundred thousand dollars. So every year, they got credited seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars plus the six percent interest towards their industrial payment that was due on October fifteenth. So say in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, and I don't know this for sure, but say their industrial district tax was five million dollars, then we, after we calculated and billed it on the seventy-five percent, then we would subtract the eight hundred ninety-one thousand dollars, which was the seven twenty plus interest. We would subtract that against their industrial tax.
But if we had not done that, they would have overpaid the contract, would they not, by twenty percent? Because the prepayment was one, was for one year of five. And so if they'd known the prepayment and then they had paid us an additional five payments, they would have overpaid the contract. The twenty percent has the effect of reducing the contract back to the negotiated amount over five years. In other words, we didn't give up twenty percent. We got the twenty percent ahead of time.
Right, we didn't, we didn't lose the twenty percent in any way, but the only thing we paid was the interest.
Well, our actual credits that we issued were six percent of the initial amount. What was that amount? I've got two figures here. One of your figures says that the amount was seventeen million four hundred thousand and another one says it was twenty million three hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred.
Okay, seventeen million four is the total amount of the prepayments. Twenty million three fourteen five is the total amount that we credited back towards the industrial contracts and the difference is the interest.
All right, and the difference is two million nine hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Yes, sir.
And...
That's the six percent interest.
And does that equate to six percent of the entire amount that we recovered from all these companies?
It's not exactly six percent, just like on any other, it's six percent of the balance each year. If you notice how the payments went, the credits went down every year, it's because the balance was going down.
So we did put, we did use a declining balance method?
Yes.
That would have reduced six percent to about five point three percent.
I didn't calculate it all like that hits over five years.
The total amount of the payments for all five years from all five companies is around eighty million dollars, is it not?
That's about right, yes.
About eighty million dollars. And to get seventeen million of that ahead of time, out of eighty million dollars, we sacrificed two million nine hundred and fourteen thousand dollars over five years.
Over five years, yes, sir.
You remember what our fund balance was before we accepted that prepayment?
Uh, no, but I, I do know that this seventeen four was included in the fund balance.
Fund balance was, I think, under twelve million dollars.
Yeah, I don't remember this. This was in two thousand eight and I wasn't financed to recommend it, so.
As a result of a couple of hurricanes, our fund balance was down under twelve million, probably still million dollars. And I'm not sure if we weren't counting FEMA as receivables at that time.
We were.
So if they were...
Now, this happened in two thousand, we got the prepayments in January two thousand nine.
Right. After the two hurricanes.
Yeah, two hurricanes.
We were in two thousand five and I can two thousand eight.
And I would say that having this money on hand did allow us to go on and make our repairs and, as we needed to, and then wait on the money to come back from FEMA. We may not have had the cash on hand to make all the repairs due to the damage from the hurricane, had we not had this money. I don't think it was by design. I don't know because I didn't do it, but it did work out that way.
Those were certainly things that we all discussed when the manager recommended that we do this and we all voted to do it. And we brought our fund balance up to, let's say, one point, twenty-three million and then when the contracts began to come in, when revenue, when the contracts came in, I think it went up to thirty million, past thirty million, and it has remained around thirty million dollars sixty, has it not?
Yes, sir.
And it is today about twenty-eight or better million dollars in our reserves.
Yes, sir.
And so as a result of that decision that we made, we are well-prepared for another storm. Just wanted to point those things out. Thank you.
Councilmember Louis?
You know, if you all believe that, you'll also believe that the pistols, your pistols was the wives of the apocalypse.
I think it's a violation of the court order.
You borrowed seventeen million dollars, seventeen million four hundred thousand dollars. You paid back twenty million. That's a loan. Now, you can try to muddy it up and call it what you want to, you made a bad decision. And you're a bad, and I can even characterize it with a dumb decision. It was bad. Bad for business, bad for city, brought out the bad for city, for lots of future revenue and it really got worse. You discounted the values to the industry and then you discounted, once one discount, then you discounted to a rate. Some industry paid sixty-five, seventy-five percent of the rate, other industries paid sixty-five percent of the rate, created a whole bunch of confusion and some hard feelings. And that city manager got to try to repair that relationship. It just was a bad decision. You left a ton of money on the table and the public suffered. Couldn't deliver the service, garbage trucks breaking down in the street, I'm passing up trucks with dry shelves hanging on the ground in the middle of Gulf Way Drive. Groves had to come over and bring us some vehicles from welfare, give us welfare. You know, and I got some other stories, but I don't know if I'm giving it now, I'm just going to stick to it. Can't, because you left money on the table and you credited it back to industry, which cut about three million dollars. And then I'm going to give a report from the manager on the impact of having to, no money to replace new vehicles, the repairs went through the roof, overtime went through the roof, all these problems, that probably had another several, several million dollar impact. We probably looking at a total of six to eight million dollar impact behind a bad decision to borrow the seventeen million dollars, credit back twenty million and the exact interest, which is all real money, is two point nine million dollars. Now, you can try to muddy it up if you want. You can call it an advance payment if you want, but you don't make any, six percent interest is a loan. We could have went right downtown here, because I wouldn't want to, we could have went right downtown here to the bank down here and I went and talked with him, I was not on the council. Would you all have made us a loan at a better rate? Yes, but we was not asked. Right, right down the street, two blocks down here, two, three blocks down. He said it was not asked. But all the campaigns, oh, that was that fantastic thing. That was not a loan. But here are the figures, reality. And I got some more for you, when the city manager get me that other report.
Prepayment, that should say total repayment. I think that's what was confusing.
Hmm? Total repayment? Or total prepayment?
At the bottom it says...
But I'm looking at the total interest.
Right.
And I'm, I'm looking at the seventeen thousand four hundred that we borrowed and I'm looking at the two point nine million that we paid back.
I think it really was total prepayment credit and I cut off on the column.
Like I say, you believe that, you still be good at this.
The only thing, sir...
Councilmember Williamson?
The only thing, sir, that we have wanted to say is that you will not admit when you are wrong.
We will go to the next discussion, a discussion on council communications with the media on behalf of the Ontario City Council requested by Councilwoman Riscott.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, I would like to talk about council members speaking to the media. Recently, they had a news article in the LA Times that had some quotation by Councilman Councilman Williamson, one of his quotations was that the council members were not ready to extend a lengthy contract at this time to the city manager. Now, this is an ad-will position, so it does not call for a lengthy contract. The contract is basically done year to year. It's done year to year and we can amend the contract. So this statement that Councilman Williamson made was not correct. He also made a comment that we give, referring to the city manager, we give him a C minus. He really has not, he didn't have enough time to do great, a great many of things he needed to do. Now, I don't know where he got this C minus from. I'm supposed to pull it out of the air or something. Because again, he's making comments and they just basically is opinions. Because nowhere did council discuss giving vote, majority vote on these things that Councilman Williamson said. These two quotations, he used weak. Again, he's constantly using a weak. He's not speaking for this whole council. He's not speaking for this whole council at all. It's just his opinion. Again, he should not be speaking for this council, making a comments that are not facts, that are false. He should not be doing that. And me as a council member, I don't agree with him making these type of comments when there's no facts, okay? He doesn't speak for council members, all council members. He just speak for himself. So again, I don't agree with those comments. City manager, I'd like to ask, would you ask Dr. Dickpen to step up, please?
No, he can't. What can I do with this report?
I would like, I would like to ask questions, that's what I'd like to ask pertaining to what I'm speaking about. And Dr. Dickpen can't speak on these, on human resources.
Can I say something? The only thing is, the topic is about communications with the media. So that's what the topic would need to be, this was posted, is communications with the media. I'm not trying to...
It's communication with the media.
It's not what I want to talk about.
It's communication with the media. That's what I said I would like to talk about. And I've already stated what Councilman Williamson said to the media. And I would like to speak to Dr. Dickpen in regards to what he said to the media.
I just don't want us to start going into personnel issues.
I'm not going to.
Okay, I just make sure...
I'm not going to touch now.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Dr. Dickpen?
Are you not Dr. Dickpen? Okay, Dr. Dickpen, you're human resources. The things that I've said so far, that this position is an ad-will position, so it's not a lengthy contract. We do it on a year-to-year basis. Is that true?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you know or recall that the council member as a full council gave the city manager a C minus?
No, sir.
Okay. So to my knowledge, he, the city manager scored higher than a C minus, correct?
As those grades normally give. Yes, sir.
Okay. So he scored higher than a C minus?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, if he scored higher than a C minus, looking at, looking at what a four point O scale is, that's what we based it on, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're basing it on a four point O scale. A C minus would be under C, so a C would be two point O, correct?
Hold on, councilmember Scott, hold on a second, please. City attorney?
And I don't want to, I understand we posted to talk about, this is a generic posting about communications with the media and I just want to caution you, I think we're going into personnel issues. When you talk about personnel and certain staff, I really do think it's a problem.
Okay, so, Dr. Dickpen, you answer my questions, okay? We did not give the city manager a C minus and this is an ad-will position which does not call for a lengthy contract, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Mayor for Kent Williamson?
Are the lights on?
Yeah.
Let anyone else who wants to throw a rock at the throw. And I will retire after that.
Councilwoman Scott, will you turn the light on, please? Don't let it still on. Okay, Councilman Louis?
Yes, I don't need to throw a rock at you, you're beating yourself up. The city manager met expectations, correct?
Yes.
That's all I need.
Councilman Albright?
Yes. I'm just curious, because the next time an expectant article comes out and the councilman makes a statement, are we going to do this each and every time? Because this is rather idiotic tonight.
It is.
And... No, I fully believe this is probably full-blown idiotic nonsense, though.
But I know. First of all, you should not be making statements that is not correct. And if I'm a council member, I'm going to make sure that I state facts and I won't be putting stuff out there.
Councilmember Scott.
That's what we call...
Councilmember Scott.
Putting out there facts or his idea of facts?
It's been proven as fact, we just spoke to the man over here with resources.
Dr. Dickpen, you believe...
We just spoke to the man over here with resources. He did not get a C minus.
City attorney, councilmember Scott.
Thank you. Councilmember Scott, you can do it to your contract with the city manager.
We have not done it, we have not even practiced it.
Hey, yes, we have.
You know, what happened, I'm asking councilmember Scott to stop. I've asked you more than once, sir. City attorney?
The reason I had to interrupt you before is when you talking about the city manager and you talking about his duties, you have specific rules that apply to that. So we don't want to start talking about the city manager's performance. He has certain rights under the law, so we don't want to, my understanding that this was about generic communication, but we can't go into the city manager's personnel issues unless it's properly posted and he's given an opportunity for a public hearing. We don't want to go there unless it's properly posted.
And you know, if we comment on every time a council member says something in the media, every meeting will have a rebuttal or something to say, every single meeting will have it because it happens all of the time, all of the time. And a lot of it's just not factual. Some of it's just a bunch of lies and I have to be honest with you, so it's just not factual. Councilmember Williamson?
Whoa, still a lot of lights on there.
I, yeah.
Okay, I'm going to have to talk again for more rock throws out there.
Well, okay, then, Councilman Louis?
Well, I don't need to comment anymore, mayor, you just said the council was a whole bunch of lies.
No, sir, I didn't say that. And you're not smart enough to speak for me, so let's go. This is getting to be obvious. Council, city attorney, what else?
We are only posted to talk about communications with the media. This is generic posting. If we want to go into anything else, you have to post it properly. So we need to head the discussions about communications with the media and that's all we can talk about at this time. Anything else is a violation of the open meetings act.
And that's exactly what's been happening up here. A violation of the open meetings act. Councilman Troy, do you want to talk about this particular topic?
That's a topic of ours.
I wouldn't know, do you even want to talk about this topic?
The topic is communications in the media.
On behalf of the attorney?
It is, it was said that members shouldn't make comments to the media and I agree with that, with it. But the thing about it is this, we shouldn't make comments to the media that affects, give the impression that we're speaking for the entire council, unless we are speaking for the entire council and has the entire council approval. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Scott? Councilman Louis?
I didn't much like what that article turned out either. There were some things that I said that weren't printed that might have put that in a better way, but you know, I don't get to pick. I do an interview and I may just talk too long and then the reporter has to cut back on my statements because they have word counts and they have column inches and so they put what they think they did to it. Sometimes I like that, sometimes I don't. When I read this article, I immediately called the city manager to apologize to me because I knew that had an adverse effect on him and it was uncalled for. And I publicly apologized to him. I wish that it had come out a little differently. I certainly portrayed that a little differently. But that's what happens when reporters and politicians get together and we're not quite used to talking to each other. So I'm not mad at the reporter, it's my fault. The other thing I did was to insist that the comment I made about the milestones in the quarterly reports be credited to Councilmember Kerry Thomas because he's the one who had the idea. That also, and the word counting and the column inch counting got deleted until it come out. So I'll say for curious purposes, I thought I talked to him on the phone and told him, I gave a crap, guy, I really did. Perhaps a year ago during my campaign, then I began to use the word "I" and "my". And I used that in a lot of statements that when the council members called me and chatted me that we were a team and I was using "I" and "my" way too much and he just didn't know me anymore. And so I began to concentrate on using the word "we". And then I've been chatted for that. So I'll tell you what, I'm going to put a disclaimer paragraph at the disposal of all the folks in the media that I talked to that's going to say that Councilmember Williamson's comments and opinions are his own and he don't necessarily reflect those of anyone else. And then in the article, I'm going to say "I" or "we" or whatever I want to.
Councilman Louis?
When I say "I", that means I initiated something. That's what it means, I initiated. I can't, and when you talk about "we", when I talk about a team, then that makes me a follower. And a team as a leader, not on this council, we're elected individually and we all stand on our individual opinions and we respond. We are not a team. We're more or less like a salad or something, you know, like some people talk about milk in the pot. No, ain't no such thing as a milk in the pot, a salad. When they come together and they go back and they keep their own shades of form. But "we", when I say, I'm, when I say, now I've been criticized for saying "I", when I say "I", I'm talking about "I initiated something". That's what it means. If everything on this agenda was initiated by somebody, ain't no team, ain't no "we" put this on the agenda. It's "I". If you got a problem with it, so be it. "I initiated", something was initiated, that's all it mean. And don't, don't, and I resent just talking about team, a team, you know, serving as a team. I mean, somebody's league or somebody is the coach. You got basketball teams, football teams, everybody rattles around, that's the league. This is not a team. Everybody standing on his, every toe of his should stand on his own bottom because guess what? There are voters that may going to hold your count and they also hold your count.
Councilmember Thomas?
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Williamson did speak for the whole council and it wasn't really the council. The whole council as a council failed. But what I can say, "we" as a council embarrass this city every chance we get, standing up here, sitting up here acting like this. And I don't care who toes, I step on, curl them up. If we don't have respect for each other, at least have respect for our constituents and this city. There are some things that we can discuss in the back room or downstairs and not bring it up there and embarrass this city and our staff. It's time out for this stuff. "We" need to grow up.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes, we have grown up, by Councilman Thomas. But the thing about it again is this, if I'm speaking to the media and I use "we" and "we" as a council, then the council votes, okay, as a whole. And when they vote, you get a majority vote and you can say "council". But until you get a majority vote and you make statements... But until you get a majority vote and you make statements that are not factual, then you use "we." You, you bringing me into it. So if you're making comments that are not factual, and the council are not voting on it, and it's been a majority vote by a council, then you don't use "we," especially when the facts are not true. So if you're gonna go out and make comments to the media, you need to make sure that you make everything facts, and, and if it's your opinion, then you need to announce that that's your opinion, and don't bring anybody else into your opinion.
Councilmember Thomas?
Councilman Scott, if you ever said, at the beginning of my statement, I said Councilman Williamson was wrong. At the beginning of my statement, I said Councilman Williamson was wrong by his statement. I also said that we, as a council, need to stop embarrassing this city. Some of y'all, a lot of people up here are retired, but a lot of y'all don't go to work and get laughed at every morning by people outside of this city, by the way we act.
You have something else you want to add to that, Councilman? Please turn your light on. Let's go to the next one. A written opinion on the legality of the signature suspected rezoning of the Edison property requested by Councilmember Lewis.
Yes, uh, City Attorney, I want you to reschedule this. I have an opportunity to read the shared opinion and reschedule the next, next council meeting.
Report on conflict of interest by Councilmembers. I guess that's one council member, because it hasn't constantly been there. Our councilmembers handle the legality of said conflicts and interest requests by Councilmember Lewis. That might be more than what I have, no idea.
What I want to talk...
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes. What I want to talk about here, we voted on the issue of dealing with the Edison property, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And when one council member claimed a conflict of interest, and I'm looking at this conflict of interest statement right here, and it says, "A relative." Now, what I don't understand, when I find it, when I ask about it, they say, "Well, he has a relative that worked for, uh, the contractor I dated." But my question to the City Secretary, what that has to do with a zoning issue? Here's a, here's a zoning request, Port Arthur Independent School District. PAISD. The town, uh, March nineteen, two thousand thirteen, Mr. Ronald Burton, Director, Assistant Director, Senior Porter Arthur. Dear Mr. Burton, attached is an application for a rezoning of former Edison School tract from an S-three zoning designation to multifamily. The PAISD board had, board had voted to sell this surplus tract and the proposed new owner, Porter Arthur Howler, initiative. And the PAISD, PAISD will appreciate you helping to secure the required rezoning. Signed, Mark Porter, Deputy Superintendent. The developer had, this relative working for the developer has nothing to do with this rezoning. We have a, we are elected officials. We have obligations to vote, to vote on issues, not to skirt issues, or find excuses not to vote. You know, using his own terms, we need, somebody needs to grow up. You're right, he needs to grow up. Someone, uh, about, use a term about embarrassment?
What's your point of thought, though?
The term nobody...
Okay, what is your point?
I'm not even gonna sit up here and be insulted by anyone.
Well, you can leave like you're...
You're doing a personal attack, Mayor, and you want to talk about...
I'm leaving, I'm leaving. Listen, listen for the...
Councilmember Lewis, you're personally attacked.
The point, you know, I...
Yes, you are, sir, if you want to talk about conflict...
No, he said, listen, listen to him. He stated he was embarrassed. This constituent was embarrassed because they needed his help and he refused to vote. He walked out. So there's no conflict with anybody on it.
He does not, uh, let me vote on his point of thought, if you don't mind. If you would just stop for a minute.
I'm through, I'm through.
Well, I'm so, she went through, because I was...
I've said what I have to say.
Well, turn your light. We're, we're, we're done.
There's no conflict, and you get dumped out.
Make your remarks, we're going to back because it's crazy.
Mayor, that don't mean, that don't mean...
Dumped there without comment.
Okay, good, and because, City Attorney Jerry?
Um, Mayor, I was requested to do this report. I did contact the legal department at TML, and one thing that was made very clear is there is no penalty for being overly cautious. Their general rule is, if in doubt, fill it out. So there's no penalty for being overly cautious. But they do suggest that if a council member has a, a question about a conflict of interest, to contact their personal legal counsel for advice.
Councilmember Thomas?
Thank you, City Attorney. Uh, City Secretary. When this rezoning came up, I went to the city legal counsel, city attorney, and I got advice from the city legal counsel. And per her advice, I filled out a sheet to recuse myself. Councilman Lewis is no attorney, though he's been killed. Council, uh, city attorney, I've been to law school, and I would take her advice every time, ten out of ten times over Councilman Lewis or any other councilman up here.
City Attorney? City Attorney? I need to hear from you. With this, with this request by Port Arthur Independent School District for rezoning, and you, and knowing this, and he claimed, why would you give him advice to abstain of, 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 of father conflict? Why would you do that? It has nothing to do with, uh, the, Port Arthur Independent School District requested the zoning for the track management. So why would you do that? Why, tell me, help me to understand. Why would you tell him? If he feels that he don't, that he has a conflict of interest and in which he does not have a conflict of interest, why would you give him that kind of advice? Help me to understand that.
TML has instructed us, and again, you all have been trained, that if you believe you have a potential conflict, TML specifically advised, and we contacted TML, that if you feel that there's something in which you have a conflict of interest based upon the state statute, that it is incumbent upon the person to give their personal legal counsel to make that decision. I shared the information with TML. We called TML. We looked at the state statute, and he made the decision based on the information that you all have been trained upon, the information that is in the state law. The conflict of interest law is a, is a determination that you have to personally make to make sure that, uh, as a council member, you don't get off into something that you have no reason to be. If you want to look at the form, then in the form it should state what the conflict is. But if there is a dispute, a discrepancy, or a concern, that is for a prosecutorial, uh, body like the Attorney General or the District Attorney's Office to determine. Legal counsel for the city, I can't tell you, hey, you work here, you need to fill this out. If you come to me, I will show you what the law says, and it's a personal decision of the council member. So if the council member feels that, after he's looked at the statute, that there's something in which he feels that he has a conflict, then he has to make that decision. I showed him the law, and he made that personal decision that does not... See, if you feel that something has been done wrong, then it's for a prosecutorial body, such as the Attorney General and the District Attorney, to review. It's nothing that I can do about it. But it is for a person determined, because you know what your, uh, financial situation is, you know what, who your employer is. There are specific things in that statute that's on that form. I don't know what, uh, any particular relationship is with the school district or any other person, felt as though that he met the requirements of the statute and he made his decision.
City Attorney, I'm pretty comfortable, comfortable, this conflict of interest activated here tracks the state law.
Yes, it does.
Now, listen up. First conflict, if any, a business entity is involved, and I am more, my relatives own ten percent or more of voting stock or shares of the business entity. Didn't check that? A business entity is involved, and I, my relative owns ten percent or more of five thousand dollars or more of the fair market value of the business. Didn't check that? A business entity is involved, and funds received from the business entity exceed ten percent of my, my, uh, my relative's income for the previous year. The name of the businesses, didn't miss, didn't check that either. Real property is involved, and I have, or my relatives have, an equal legal ownership with a fair market value of at least twenty-five hundred dollars. Didn't check that either. The father relative of mine has a substantial interest in this matter. Didn't check that either. Action on this matter by the public body of which I am a member will have a specific economic effect on me. Didn't check that either. Now, the things that you should check, me, said relatives, said business entities, said real property. He checked the relative. That's all. His relative owned stock, nothing. He just checked the relative. This constituent was needing him to support them. He failed. He, he, he opted out.
And Councilman Albright?
Yes, Mayor. City Attorney? You know, we've had two items, Kenai, that have gone way off base.
Yes, sir.
And I just want to know if we're gonna continue to do this every single meeting? Because if so, the mayor requests a break at the end of council? So I can personally leave, because I'm not gonna sit through this anymore?
I'm gonna leave with you, I promise you.
I, I, I think that we, at this point, need to really discuss, if, if you need some type of... We need to enforce the rules of decorum and start taking the process seriously, and I'll do whatever I need to do to facilitate that.
We have an ordinance, we have a resolution, we have a resolution that we need to find, that we need to abide by. So, City Secretary, if you don't mind, I think you know which one I'm talking about, that limits, you know, the discussion which council member has, because this is going totally off base. This is crazy, and it's an embarrassment. Mayor, please.
I always go to err on the side of caution when I file a conflict of interest statement. And I don't recall ever having been trained to fill out the form. So, please check my forms and make sure I fill them out properly, and if not, let's go back to those corrections and all the initial...
Yes, sir.
The, uh...
Okay.
And, ma'am, I'd just like to, to know if we're gonna do that reservation we talked about today.
We're not posted for this discussion. We're, we're, we're off, yeah. I understand what the council is saying, but we're not posted for where we are right now, so we, we, I, we can, we can make those requests for the next meeting. You can let us know, let staff know what your requests are.
We did the motion.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay, the reports of boards and commissars have...
Hey, Val, here he is.